Today is Tuesday, February 22nd, 2022. The time is 6:00 PM. At this time, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Councilmember Mendoza.
Here.
Councilmember Neal.
Here.
Councilmember Hughes.
Here.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Here.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Vice Mayor Cortez.
Here.
And Mayor Walter here. At this time, we will begin with a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance. At this time, we'll go ahead and open our first call to the public. Is there anybody here or online that would wish to speak at this time? Seeing no hands raised, we're going to go ahead and close the first call to the public. Please note that there will be a second call to the public at the close of the meeting as well. Item six, presentations. Item six A is recognizing Chris Salas as the Outstanding Employee Recognition Program Award recipient for March 2022 for his outstanding contributions to our organization. I just want to go ahead and share a little bit of background. The Employee Incentives Committee developed the Outstanding Employee Recognition Program, and this gives our employees the ability to recognize their coworkers for all of their outstanding contributions to the organizations as well as the citizens we serve. This award is given based on employee nominations. It's reviewed by the EIC Board, and we also present a $75 gift certificate to the employees' business of choice within the Town of Florence. I would like to go ahead and share this nomination. My nomination for the Outstanding Employee Recognition Award is Chris Salas. Chris is the Public Works Director responsible for the infrastructure of the Town of Florence. Many people do not see Chris in his duties as an engineer and director. He is a quiet behind-the-scenes director. He deals with contractors and developers, and this is a very critical position and requires a person with high intelligence, ethics, and organization skills. Chris has all of these. During this time, I've worked with him. I have attended meetings that he has organized and led. He's a great coordinator, treating each member of the discussion with respect and dignity. He stays the course of the subject and always has the best interest of the town when discussing critical issues. He is fair in his discussions with management staff, always expressing what he feels as the truth, and has moral fiber to stand by his decisions. If he feels he has an error, he readily admits it. He studies everything that he does so he has all the facts available on hand to uphold his position. Chris manages multimillion-dollar projects and always looks for ways to do them in the most cost-effective way with the best quality. He understands budget and is concise of his use of public funds that he is entrusted with. Chris strives to do the very best with what he can for the town. He is a planner and invests himself 200% in his duties. You can find him sending texts late at night, early in the morning, and on the weekends. His mind is on his job and keeping up with our fast-paced changes that are occurring. Chris is high-energy. Chris is also very caring for his staff. He's always concerned about their well-being and works diligently with his supervisors, instructing them and showing them their way. He defends them and takes responsibility onto himself if they should make mistakes. It is an admirable quality for such a busy man. His staff is very loyal to him. He's had to make presentations where the subject was not an easy one, and he always does this with the facts, even if not popular, and with dignity. I would want this director on my team any day of the week. He is moral, efficient, and dedicated to the town and the work he does. So Mr. Chris Salas, is he right here? I'm trying to focus and look out in the audience. Would you meet me at the podium, please? Would you like to say a few words, sir?
Just at the podium, or? I'll stick to the podium so I can actually... I am extremely humbled by this. For those who know me, I am not a person who celebrates myself or my victories, and unfortunately, that probably carries over to the team because the expectations are so high. It is almost impossible to achieve at times because the goal is perfection every day. Like I said, I'm touched by the words. I'd like to thank the person who nominated me. I believe I understand their speech patterns and their sayings, so I now know who it is. And like I said, I'm just very humbled, and I want to make sure that what was said in that doesn't get lost. Similar to a person who wins an MVP award in a sport, the people who work with me on my team, the people who work with me at the management level, city manager, town manager, town attorney, all the people contribute to the things that I get credit for, without a doubt. I am a small cog in the overall scheme of things, and like I said, thank the management team, the person nominating, my own team members, including all the way down to the people who clean these facilities. We have amazing, amazing people who work and take pride in things that maybe get lost on the rest of, but like I said, I notice everybody's hard work on every level, from our fleet department, water department, wastewater department, every single thing that these people do on a daily basis. I thank them very much, and like I said, I'm just lucky enough to be the head of the Public Works Department. Thank you.
This is from you, and you can choose the certificate of your choice.
Yeah, I've been putting some thought into that. Where'd you let me know that first day?
You'll have to let us know your choice.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you. All right, our next item is six B, our Legislative Agenda Presentation for 2022. Mr. Jeff Graves.
Perfect, okay. All right. Good evening. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, Members of Council. Tonight, I'll be presenting the 2022 Legislative Agenda and Update for you all. First off, just some high-level goals in terms of what we'll be looking at this evening. I'll start with an overview of this year's legislature. I'll then move on and discuss our legislative agenda and our legislative priorities, and then I'll wrap up with a discussion of some of the key bills that we've seen pass out of committee in the House and Senate thus far this year. So first up, just wanted to, like I said, tackle some high-level overview items. So in terms of the calendar, the second regular session of the 55th Arizona Legislature began on January 10th earlier this year, so we've been hearing bills for about a month and a half at this point. We're no longer hearing new bills, as the bill introduction deadline did pass in the Senate and House in late January and early February, so any new bills now come in the form of "strike everything" bills, where the bill number remains the same, but everything else is removed and replaced with language from another bill. So over the...about the next...oh, additionally, last week was crossover week, as it's referred to, so it was the last week to hear House bills in House Committee and Senate bills and Senate Committees. And so obviously, that's required before it can move over to the opposing chamber and be heard. And so over the next month or so, those bills will have the opportunity to travel across the chamber until March 25th. That's the last day Senate bills can be heard in the House, and vice versa. So if that doesn't occur, the legislation will not be moved forward this year, or this session, rather. And then finally, the 100th day of the legislative session will occur on April 19th. That's the technical end of this session. Of course, there can be additional sessions or special sessions that are opened up if the governor or the legislature still has outstanding priorities that they'd like to tackle this year. Moving on to some of the leadership positions and local representatives, so this looks very similar to last year. We have in the Senate, Senate President Karen Fan, and in the House, we have Speaker of the House Rusty Bauer. They both serve on the Rules Committee as they set the calendar and agenda for the House and Senate. In terms of our local representatives, we have Senator TJ Shope out of Coolidge in District Eight. He serves on four committees listed there, and he's the vice chair of three of those. On the House side, we have Representative David Cook, and then we have Representative Neil Carter. Neil Carter is the new representative who took over for Frank Pratt late last year after he passed away, and he is serving on Commerce and Transportation with Cook, and he's also serving on the Judiciary Committee as he has a legal background. Real quick, I just wanted to touch on our district. This is the last district...this is the last session or year that will be in Legislative District Eight, as most of you are familiar. There was a redistricting process last year, and going forward, Florence is actually going to be split into two legislative districts. We're going to be in LD7 to the north. That's going to encompass areas north of Hunt Highway and Butte, and so it's going to include Anthem and kind of go all the way up to South Flagstaff and Williams area. And then our legislative district to the south, LD16, will include areas south of Hunt Highway, south of Butte. It'll encompass Casa Grande to the west and move down south towards the old Tucson area. So from a high level, our district is shrinking on the east and west, expanding to the north and south further than it has in the past. So I'll be back either to council or via email with an update once those final maps come out, and then we'll take a look and see who may be running in those districts and how that may affect the legislative landscape for the town going forward. So next up, I just wanted to touch on some major themes that we're seeing in this session so far, as this kind of serves as the foundation for a lot of the bills that we're seeing and we'll be discussing later on. So first up, we have homelessness, obviously a major issue in Arizona and elsewhere. One that MAG, American Association of Governments, is paying a lot of attention to and has put forth a regional plan with cities and towns on. So the legislature has turned their sights and looking to tackle the affordable housing issue. Obviously, this is a holistic issue, has a lot of different drivers and inputs, but the conversation through various stakeholder meetings has focused and turned to local zoning laws as really being the cause for a lot of the affordability issues. And so that gave rise to that By Right Housing Bill, which you mentioned a couple weeks ago, Mayor, which would undo a lot of the local control and regulation that occurs in terms of our oversight, in terms of the citizen review process, in terms of the council review process. It was a very extreme measure. Unfortunately, we were able to stop its progression in the House. Of course, it could go to the Senate, or pieces of it could show up later in legislation. So in response to that, the League is putting together its own Affordable Housing Bill, one that's much more palatable to cities and towns, which we'll be discussing in a little bit. Regarding short-term rentals, really the main issue here is proliferation in certain communities. So your Sedonas and Flagstaffs and Scottsdales, there's so many short-term rentals, it's adversely affecting workforce housing, it's adding to the affordable housing issue, and so the League and cities and towns would like to see more tools given to municipalities so they can somewhat regulate that industry. And so the legislature is...just wants to be cautious with that, make sure there's guardrails there so cities and towns can't effectively ban short-term rentals or reduce them by a significant margin. So but those are some of the high-level ideas that are showing up in legislation we're seeing. In terms of vaping and tobacco, really, the legislature is looking at centralizing the licensing and the regulation of those sales. That would preempt some local zoning laws and some local regulations where they exist, and so the League has a few concerns regarding some of those bills for those reasons. A few more here. So in terms of vaccines and COVID-19, there's a large push of the legislature to prohibit any kind of mask mandates or vaccine mandates. However, on kind of the flip side of those policies, those proposals are adding...may add significant costs and liability for employers and governments, so there's a little bit of concern in terms of the League and reductions of local control or just additional, as I mentioned, costs or liability for employers and governments. So we'll discuss that in a little greater detail. In terms of elections, there's a large push in Arizona and elsewhere for increased voter integrity and transparency. In terms of specific proposals, the League is somewhat concerned, for example prohibiting all male elections completely is on the docket, and also there's a number of unfunded mandates or additional administrative oversight that will be required, say, for example, if one bill would require you to scan and image all the ballots so that they're searchable. With that, you have retention issues, you have, you know, security issues in terms of the document, you know, we have possible redaction issues. So those are some of the ideas and concerns that we're seeing in terms of elections. With transportation, just wanted...obviously, transportation is always a large focus for the legislature. However, there's, I think, a lot of momentum in this area, both because of the federal infrastructure bill, so there's a lot of funding available, and then there's also a number of comprehensive packages for some of the Tier Two Ready projects that are ready throughout the state, and so we'll be discussing that a little bit later. Lastly, there's kind of one more major theme I wanted to mention. Those are...we're seeing a number of anti-League of Arizona cities and towns and anti-public lobbying bills that would either restrict cities and towns' ability to, say, hire contract lobbyists, and so, you know, the League is kind of...so the legislature seems intent somewhat on reducing this sphere of influence for the League and cities and towns in terms of who we can hire to lobby on our behalf. We don't hire any contract lobbyists. I am the lobbyist for the town currently, but in the future, if we wish to, certain bills may disallow that for cities and towns. So last up in our introduction, just want to touch on a few high points from the governor's proposed budget. So there's additional funding for PSPRS, 611 million, which would bring that program to 100% funded status. We have 10 million for cybersecurity grants, which would make certain tools that the state uses available to smaller cities and towns that may be free or reduce costs. There's an integrated tax system modernization project. That's an Arizona Department of Revenue project, which would seek to modernize some of their internal systems, but unfortunately, would come with a price tag for cities and towns. For Florence, it's estimated if this does move forward and land in the final budget, that we would owe 140,000 over five years, or about 23,000 per year. So from what I've heard, this is similar to programs in the past that ADOR wanted to push, where, you know, they're making improvements, but it comes with a price tag in terms of TPT revenue. So we'll work to see if there's alternative funding strategies for that project. In terms of rural transportation, $50 million was included for rural transportation grants. This was related to the federal infrastructure bill, and according to some of the language, it looks like it's going to try to offset the costs for either applying or administering those grants, and so we'll see if obviously there's anything we can take advantage of there. There's 400 million in the original budget for the expansion of I-10 between Casa Grande and Phoenix, a major priority for Mayor McFarland in Casa Grande, and this would allocate significant funds for completing that project. He doesn't think he would get them 100% just with cost increases being what they are, but we'll get them much closer to where they are currently. Lastly, there's 176 million for state parks to do system-wide upgrades, include upgrades to not only the physical assets, but also some of the digital infrastructure, so you can search for, maybe reserve camping sites, for example. It also mentions historic preservation, so we could see if there's any opportunity there for historic preservation projects in the town. But overall, coming out of COVID, these parks are probably going to see greatly induce or increase traffic, so it looks like they want to beef up both the parks and the digital infrastructure surrounding them, so they're ready moving forward. Okay, so there...that's kind of the introduction of the presentation. Feel free to pause if you guys have any questions, and I'll keep moving forward here. So now getting into our proposed legislative agenda, these items are very similar to the items that you saw last year, so I'll move briefly through them. So first up, we have protecting or enhancing our existing revenue streams, always a key priority for the town, particularly over the short term, where we may have some population or revenue challenges in the future, so this will be a major priority for ours. Also, oh, excuse me, this will be a major priority for ours, including opposing any unfunded mandates that we may see or moving forward. Next up, kind of similar to number one, we have opposing any cost or liability shifting. So again, not only do we need to protect our revenues, but we need to be on the watch for increased costs or increased liabilities. As I mentioned a little bit, we've seen some of that with the new COVID or election legislation, so just remaining vigilant and making sure that the measures passed don't come with a price tag for cities and towns. Next, in terms of preserving local control, obviously, this is a huge issue when it comes to that By Right Housing that I mentioned and preserving our ability to have local codes, to have local zoning, local land use, and so this is going to be a major priority of ours this session, particularly as it relates to planning and zoning. Number four, so we have Fight for the Prison Industry, one of our key priorities, and this includes supporting pay or benefit increases for the prison staff. You know, they're dealing with staffing issues there, and they're hoping to mitigate those issues by combining staff at the Iman complex, and so but additional increases are still needed to, I think, bring some of the public employees more in line with some of the private, and so I believe Shin is asking for increased dollars for pay and benefits. I do not believe that was included in Ducey's original budget, but we'll fight for the inclusion of that down the road. Number five, seeking budget allocations for the Heritage Fund. This has been a priority for a number of years, as there's only been one-time or short-term allocations for this fund. Fortunately, we do see a bill being proposed by Senator Shope, who would reestablish that reoccurring funding stream using Arizona Lottery money starting next fiscal year, FY24. And then number six, we have create economic development opportunities for the town. So we've done a lot of this work ourselves, actually, with the Downtown Rehabilitation Grant, the FASAD Grant, the Infill Incentive District, so it'd be nice to see similar programs like that, maybe from the state level, so I think those would be some of the priorities that if we saw them in legislation, we would be very supportive of. Last few priorities here, so we have kind of in that vein would be enhancing tourism. So as we're seeking economic development opportunities for the town, just, you know, being cognizant of that tourism component, and if that can be included to help attract visitors to our town, then all the better, and that'll be one of our priorities. Number eight, protecting local water rights and resources. The drought, you know, isn't going anywhere in Arizona, and water's going to continue to be a major issue, so we just need to make sure that we can protect our existing and future water resources as people maybe look to further divide what some may see as a shrinking pie. So making sure that we retain our advantage in Penal County with those water resources so that can help fuel growth and development. And then lastly, this was the one priority I did change from last year. Last year, it was do no harm. This year, just as I mentioned, with the momentum in terms of transportation, I wanted to highlight a couple bills that are moving forward. We'll talk more about these later, but as I mentioned, there's just the...there's the funding available, and there's so many projects ready right now in terms of the North-South Corridor, I-11, the Sonoran Corridor, so I guess it's an excellent opportunity to seek some of that funding and help execute these projects in the future. So to wrap up kind of our legislative priorities section, just want to talk about what I have been and will continue to do to implement this plan. So of course, we'll continue to advocate and support this agenda at all levels and work with the League as well as the council in highlighting, you know, key bills that are coming through and letting you guys know when there's outreach opportunities on particular pieces of legislation, and so we could seek your guys'...the council's direction as needed going forward. We'll continue to attend annual legislative events, such as CAG's Annual Legislative Date, which is actually tomorrow at 10:30 for any who signed up, and then we'll continue to review bills and register our positions in the state's Request to Speak system. That system is also...it's open to everybody, including council members and members of the public, so if you guys are ever curious or want to see getting a walkthrough on that system, please let me know. Additionally, I wanted to mention there's weekly legislative update calls that are hosted by the League every 10:00 AM on Monday, so that provides a nice snapshot of kind of what's going on in terms of the legislature that week. So again, if there's any interest, please let me know. Finally, you know, we'll continue to work with our local representatives in implementing this plan and strategy at the state and at the federal level. Okay. So now I'm going to be getting into some of the key bills that we're seeing, and I'll try to move quickly through these, so please let me know if you have any questions. First, just a kind of a recap, as of last week, there were just under 1,700 bills posted by the Arizona House and Senate. About 7% of those bills have gone to committee, so about 120 bills are actively moving through the process. Of those bills, the vast majority were approved by their respective committees, and so there's about maybe 115-plus bills that are moving through the process, and there's about 30 bills that are being tracked by the League as well as the town as being potentially problematic or good bills, and so I'm going to walk through some of those now. Similar to last year, you know, the bills of concern are in red, good bills are in green, and then just the bills of note or bills to watch are in black. And so I'm actually going to skip these first through here just because they're not particularly relevant to cities and towns and in the interest of time and move on to some more relevant items. So in terms of vaccine and COVID-19-related bills, there is a Senate bill, 1048, and a House bill, 2107, that would remove the mayor's ability to order the closing of businesses during an emergency, so this isn't restricted to COVID, this is all emergencies, and it doesn't allow any type of temporary closures if there were some kind of emergency, so the League and the town is opposing this bill, just in terms of local control and wanting to preserve that ability if there were an emergency. Next up, there's 2453 and actually 1298, which is last on this list, but they're both seeking to do the same thing. It would basically prohibit governments from requiring COVID-related face masks or covering wall-on-government premises. Again, there's local control issues related to this. Hopefully, items or concerns of this, you know, kind of take care of themselves as mask mandates are naturally relaxed and eliminated in the future, but again, this is kind of a local control issue, so the League has concerns on that front. Let's see...oh, yes, and then 2616, just wanted to mention, this is more, I think, relevant for schools, but it does apply to state and any local governments. It would prohibit any state or local governments from requiring a person under the age of 18 from wearing a mask without the consent of the parent or guardian, so again, not a major town issue, but just something that may become an issue in schools in the state, so I wanted to highlight that. Okay, so that's the end of kind of the COVID or vaccination-related bills, so now I'm going to get into administration bills, administration-type bills. So the first one is that all male elections prohibited bill. You know, all male elections are significantly cheaper and... You know, all male elections are significantly cheaper and there's about 30 or 40 municipalities that do use all male elections. And so due to local control and cost issues, the league is concerned about this bill and is opposing it at this point. Next up, we have 1198. So this, oh, this is one of those anti-league, anti-public lobbying bills that would prohibit towns or cities from hiring contract lobbyists unless they're directly, direct employees of the town. So again, kind of a local control issue that the league is concerned with, and obviously anyone who does employ contract lobbyists is opposing this bill. Next up, we have 2482. So this makes plan, this makes change to the general plan statute and language and would allow public hearings to occur within 12 months of when the original proposal is made. Currently, you have to do it within the calendar year, so that may create some issues or delays with the general plan process. So I think there's just some statute clean and language cleanup there, just to make that process a little more flexible for cities and towns. So the league is supporting that. Next, we have 1238. This would require reappraisal of property if the Board of Appeals approval of the lease or sale occurred more than 240 days before an auction. So it used to be 180 days, it's being expanded to 240 days, likely because lands, land prices are increasing quickly in Arizona, so to keep pace with that, there's this reappraisal process that's being introduced and broadened. Finally, we have 2344, and just wanted to mention, this renewed the statutory life of the Military Affairs Commission. That commission oversees the military training operations throughout the state, so we were glad to see this bill move forward and they've reapproved that commission until 2030. Okay, so now I want to highlight some public safety bills for you all. The first one being 2316, this is of particular concern to cities and towns as it would preempt cities and towns from prohibiting persons from carrying concealed firearms on their premises. So there are carve-outs for judicial or law enforcement buildings or educational facilities, but if, basically if cities or town was not able to provide, say, a metal detector or have sworn officers at certain events or hire armed guards, they would not be able to prohibit anyone from carrying, from carrying a concealed firearm. So obviously, a safety issue with this bill and a local control issue and an unfunded mandate if we would have to do those countermeasures, and so the league is opposed to 2316 for those reasons. Next up, we have 1273. This would allow motorcycles to overtake stopped vehicles as long as there's two same-way lanes, and then as long as the motorcycle doesn't exceed 15 miles per hour. And so there's just a number of safety concerns whenever you allow motorcycles to travel in between lanes, and for those reasons, the league is opposing that bill at the moment. Next up, we have 1333. So this would authorize driverless vehicles to drive on roadways with a speed limit of 45 miles per hour or less. Currently, they're capped at 25 miles per hour or less, but there are some grocery delivery companies that would like to see that expanded to 45 miles per hour. The league does have some safety concerns and some concerns as it relates to kind of how that vehicle would operate in traffic situations, if it needed to pull over, where would it go? If that vehicle crashes, who's allowed to come pick it up? Currently, it's only the company that's allowed to come get it. So the league has a number of concerns they would like to see an amendment on, but for those safety concerns that they are opposing it at this point. Let's see, a couple, a couple good bills from the league's perspective. So we have fireworks bill, 1275, and House bill 2226. And this would prohibit the use of overnight fireworks from 11:00 p.m. to 8:00 a.m. except on July 4th and New Year's. So I think there's been concerns, complaints about fireworks going off on random days at all hours of the night, and so this legislation is attempting to put some guardrails around that activity and just allow it on certain holidays. But you could do it, I guess, before 11:00 p.m., just not after, if it's not falling on one of those holidays. Last on this slide, we have 2456. So this would appropriate 4 million of general fund for a rural interoperability communication system. Sounds like this system would seek to bolster the communications capacity for rural counties, such as Penal County, and I think bring their communication systems up to par with Maricopa and Pima Counties. So this looks like, this looks like a good proposal moving forward. Few more public safety bills. So we have a bill from Representative Cook, which would make supplemental appropriation of 1.2 million to help fund both PSPRS and correctional officers retirement plans. And so obviously, we're very supportive of this measure. We talked a little bit earlier about the state budget and allocating additional money for PSPRS, but not necessarily for corrections officers, so this would help fund their plan as well. Next up, just kind of a bill to watch is HB 2159. This would prohibit employers from using polygraph examinations during internal police investigations unless the officer being investigated wanted one. And so the league hasn't taken a position on this bill, but is just highlighting it as it's kind of changing the tools that are, would be available to our police if they need to conduct any kind of internal investigations. The league hasn't taken a position on this bill. Next up, I want to touch briefly on this vape and tobacco bill I mentioned earlier. So this would establish, this is 1245, this would establish the licensure of all tobacco products under a Department of Liquor licenses and control, and would also establish a separate fund for that, for those activities. Again, this would preempt some local regulation and zoning, and for that reason, the league is concerned with this bill. However, there's not a ton of cities and towns that have specific ordinances or zoning for tobacco and vape shops, so it may not create a large initial issue, but just in wanting to retain that local control, the league is concerned with this bill. Okay, finishing up public safety bills, we have 2337. So this is a kind of a drop-expansion bill, and drop is the deferred retirement option plan for PSPRS members. This would expand who can participate in drop and the length which drop would last. The league is concerned with this bill just whenever you're expanding benefits, particularly for PSPRS, which has had a really difficult time getting 100% funded as it is. They have just concerns about the liabilities and the costs that may come to cities and towns with this. Additionally, from league research, most participants in drop only use it for about half of the current time, so maybe 30 months. And so they don't really see that this would be widely utilized as well. So that's another reason that they are opposed to this measure. Next up, we have HB 2021. So this would establish drug trafficking homicide as a class-one felony. I think this is in response to some of the fentanyl issues we're seeing in Arizona and elsewhere, and so this would reclass this crime as a serious offense for sentencing purposes. So if you gave someone fentanyl and they died as a result, then you would be held liable under drug trafficking homicide laws. And then last public safety bill is 2431. This would require an EMT to contact a doctor if the EMT is not transporting a patient to the hospital. So in talking with fire staff and listening to league conversation, there's already a lot of rules and regulations as it relates to transport or not transporting a patient to the hospital. And so the league has concerns that this isn't really a big issue that needs solving. In addition, needing to call a doctor, that provision is worrisome for some if you're operating in a rural area or the doctor's busy or you can't contact anyone, what happens then? So they kind of see this as adding some red tape to a process that's already working well throughout the state and one that should be governed by local municipalities. Okay, so now I'm just going to move and just touch on that heritage funding bill under the Parks and Historic Preservation. So this is that Shope bill I mentioned earlier, that, so beginning in FY '24, so not this fiscal year, but next, it would allocate state lottery monies for the Heritage Fund. Again, that's what, this would replace kind of the one-time funding we've seen over the last couple of years and get this program back to recurring and fully funded status. So we're very supportive of this bill and will support it moving forward. Let's see, okay, last slide here, we have a couple of transportation bills I just wanted to touch on. So there's House bill 2396. This was, this is seeking an appropriation of $50 million for rural transportation projects, and this project list was prepared by regional transportation planning agencies like RTAC, and so we've been supportive of this measure moving forward. And there's also 2728, this is that Tier Two funding bill. It's seeking $58 million to fully fund the remaining Tier Two study costs for the northern section of I-11, for the remaining sections of the north-south corridor. Right now, we have Tier Two funding for the 60 to Arizona farms. We need funding for the middle and lower section to get us down to I-10 before construction can commence. And then this also includes money for the Sonoran corridor. So it's kind of grouping all those together to get approval for their Tier Two studies. Lastly, in terms of planning and development, just wanted to highlight this pilot program, Senate bill 1150. So the Arizona Department of Administration would like to initiate a pilot program where developers would be required to install EV charging outlets for new single-family residences. They would cover these costs up to $1,000 until the funds are expended. And so just like, you know, having dedicated outlets for your washer dryer, they want to, they want to study this and see how much it actually costs to implement. So in terms of our general plan or codes going forward, this may become something that we look at in the coming years. Lastly, I did just want to mention that the league's affordable housing bill, this is modeled after a bill that came out of Utah, which would present a menu of options for cities and towns greater than 100,000 in population to choose from. So say there's 10 various affordable housing initiatives, you could pick three or maybe five, depending on your size. And so this is a proactive alternative to the buy-right housing push that we saw earlier, and so the league is actively moving to move this forward so cities and towns can stand behind a measure that they feel actually addresses affordable housing and one that's much more palatable for municipalities. So I know that was a lot, but I just want to pause here and thank you for your time and see if there's any questions on any of the slides or specific pieces of legislation I presented.
Counsel, any questions? I don't know if we want to try to... They're not working, so. Any questions, comments? Counsel member, go ahead, please.
That was very well done. Thank you for all that information.
Absolutely, yeah. Do you have any further questions? Please reach out and let me know, and I'll be glad to assist.
All right, thank you. Excellent, comprehensive presentation. Item number seven is the consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda unless a council member or a member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. Item A is approval of operating transfers in the amount of $745,929.14. Item B is to authorize fleet staff to place an order for vehicles budgeted for fiscal year 2022, 2023. Item C is adoption of resolution 181422, authorizing the town to submit a governor's office of highway safety grant application for safety equipment for the fire department in the amount of $45,000. Item D is request approval for the interim town manager to execute the 2021 Leary Firefighters' Foundation Grant Agreement. Item E is adoption of resolution number 1813-22, authorizing the town to participate in the governor's office of highway safety grant process for monies to help enforce speeding, reckless driving, and to detect and deter impaired driving in the amount of $32,000. Item F is approval of the MOU with Central Arizona College to provide high school equivalency classes through the Town of Florence Community Library. Item G is authorization to enter into a professional services agreement with Ripple Industries, LLC to provide an assessment of the town's water production and sewer treatment sites as to the replacement and upgrading of the supervisory control and data acquisition systems for the utilities department in an amount not to exceed $79,615. Item H is approval of the January 3rd and January 5th, 2022 Town Council Meeting Minutes. Ladies and gentlemen, that is your agenda. Is there any member of council that would like any item removed at this time? With that, we need a motion.
Make a motion, we approve a consent agenda as read.
Second. Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item eight, unfinished business, A. Resolution number 180822, this is discussion approval/disapproval of the resolution of the Town of Florence, Penal County, Arizona, declaring as a public record certain technical code documents filed with... I tried to go down a little bit to get closer to the microphone and I slid a little too low, so my apologies. Declaring as a public record certain technical code documents filed with the town clerk and entitled 2018 International Building Code, 2018 International Existing Building Code, 2018 International Fire Code, 2018 International Fuel Gas Code, 2018 International Mechanical Code, 2018 International Plumbing Code, 2018 International Property Maintenance Code, 2018 International Residential Code, 2018 International Swimming Pool and Spa Code, 2018 International Energy Conservation Code, 2017 National Electric Code, and the 2009 Accessible Usable Buildings and Facilities Code. Mr. Keith Ian? Thank you, I appreciate that.
............................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................. Exhibit A, you'll show the things that we have changed. And council feedback, of course, like we've said, was hugely important, and we so appreciate that. Where do we go from here? Tonight, of course, is the resolution and the ordinance of adoption. I will say that this is just one PowerPoint for the resolution and the ordinance, so I won't go through this again for the next presentation. We've presented a draft copy of the amendments through the work session. We worked through those. And then, of course, tonight, we have the final read and any further discussion. The effective date, if adopted tonight, will be April 1st. We have spent a lot of time working with our contractors and the key people as far as getting their input. We've really appreciated their input, and some key contractors have made some changes for us. So, what you see before you tonight is only changes is what the council made in the commissioned work session. We've already began working on some projects. We've had a lot of calls from people wanting to start submitting their 2018 codes. They can't do that until April 1st, until, of course, this is also adopted, so we have the builders that are anxious to get started. And we will work with them on a grace period. The same with the review. So, we've... Most, all of our three major builders all have standard plans where they don't submit a new plan each time. It's a standard house. Each one's got about 20 houses that they have in stock for us. So, with that, this would complete our project. I would like to point out a couple of things. The changes that we talked about, we did strike, as you can see, and as Lisa had talked about earlier, the International Property Maintenance Code. Because we're going to be speaking and going through work sessions and redoing our code enforcement, we felt that this was proper to take this out at this time and adopt it if it was going to be a portion of that new program. The other things is one of the, which was an A2 occupancy requirement for fire sprinklers. We took it completely out. We reverted back to the code book at 5,000 square foot or 100 occupants. So, that, you'll see that stricken. And then, the E occupancy, we did leave that in. There was two questions. One of them was on the E occupancy, and one was the size requirement on the A2. We sent that out to council. Is there any questions on those after you'd got the emails about the explanations? Okay, very good. That's all I have.
I didn't have any questions, but I did have no clarification or a thought. And when you were talking about the...
Fire sprinkler codes. I don't know why the system is sometimes working and sometimes not. Okay, I was muted and ready to rock and roll. I just wanted to communicate, we can always go above what the standard is, and then something, you know, some of our business owners reflecting upon, and even as a homeowner, when you have certain guidelines, in the long run, it can save you money on your homeowner's insurance. And there are certain funds that are accessible to help with those programs, so I just wanted to point that out as well.
Thank you so much.
All right, if there are no further questions or comments at this time, this is agendized as an action resolution item with the second reading. So, we need a motion.
I make a motion. We approve Agenda Item 8A as recommended here tonight.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. I'm trying to adjust, and I'll talk to you guys after. It's really hard to see and measure with the microphone. It's not working well. Item B, Ordinance Number 711-22. This is the second reading and discussion approval/disapproval of an ordinance of the Town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona, adopting the following publications with appendices and the Town of Florence amendments as listed herein, are adopted by reference regulating and governing the conditions and maintenance of all property, buildings, and structures by providing the standards for supplied utilities and facilities and other physical things and conditions essential to ensure that structures are safe, sanitary, and fit for occupation and use, and condemnation of buildings and structures unfit for human occupancy and use for demolition of such structures in the Town of Florence, Arizona, providing for the issuance of permits and collection of fees therefore, repealing Section 150.300 of the Town of Florence Code of the ordinances and all other ordinances or parts of law in conflict therewith, and providing for an effective date of April 1st, 2022. Mr. Keith Eaton?
I'll try this again. Oh, here we go. I have nothing further to add to the first presentation, Madam Mayor.
Without further discussion, I don't see anybody. We need a motion.
Make a motion to approve Ordinance 712-212.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
711-22.
Item C is Ordinance Number 712-212, and this is the second reading and discussion approval/disapproval of an ordinance of the Town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona, by amending Title 10, no, 5. Utilities, Section 50, Water, by amending 50.026, striking Section 50.052, and reserving the section's future use and amending sections 5122, 5129, 5145, and 5151. Ms. Rebecca Jimenez.
Yes, Mayor and Vice Mayor and Town Counsel, this is the second reading of this ordinance. This is to amend sections of the Water Code, do some clarification and cleanup of the code itself. This was explained last time in detail. Do you want me to go through it again?
Counsel, do you have any questions regarding?
No.
No, I don't see any.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. With that, we need a motion.
Make a motion to approve Item 8C as read.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item nine, new business. 9A is discussion approval/disapproval of the Florence Arrow Modelers' Bone Field Chip Seal Project, request for funding assistance in an amount not to exceed $8,179.92. Ms. Ally Fleece.
Can you guys hear me?
Thanks, ma'am.
Yes, I would just like to start off with the Arrow Modelers. They did a chip seal repair 60% of the length of the runway in 20... I'm sorry. In two years ago, they did a 60% chip seal repair, and they're looking to do the remainder of that 40%. This is going to be a stopgap measure to protect the runway from elements, and they're requesting $8,179 to help them with the repairs. The Arrow Modelers have been great partners since 2006, so for the past 16 years. They take great pride in the airpark and provide detailed annual reports year after year. The rec staff have recently met with the Arrow Modelers, and we're excited for all the partnerships and to start promoting all of the wonderful events that they have out there. And we do have some members of the Arrow Modelers here who would like to say a few words.
Come on up to the podium. How are you today, sir? You can... Will you hand them the handhelds?
How about this one?
Perfect.
Okay. Madam Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers, I'm Rusty Caldwell, President of the Florence Arrow Modelers, and I would like to thank, in particular, several people with the town that have helped us to put together the plan to get the remaining 40% of our runway fixed up so it's not deteriorating off into the desert, which is what is happening. I'd like to thank Lisa Garcia, in particular, and Allison Feliz, also, and everybody we talked about earlier, Mr. Salas, Chris Salas. He actually came out there with Dan Sisco from Streets, and they kept us from going in the wrong direction to preserve what was done out there back in 2008, which was the composite runway that was put out there. Well, that's a long time ago. And without vehicular or heavy traffic on that kind of surface, it doesn't compact down and continue to stay. Our planes weigh anywhere from like a pound and a half to 55, 70 pounds. That's it. So, there's no road compaction like you think about regular asphalt. And so, that hurts a lot. The oil evaporates right out of there. The water, from back when we used to have rain and the monsoons, would wash it away. So, I would like to thank Mr. Dan... I'm sorry, Mr. Thomas Musineski, and I really don't know how to pronounce that name. But he is actually the state director for the Guard Top, which was the product that we were told, which is a seal product, which we were told would do the job. He came out there and looked over the situation, per the request of Mr. Sisco, and come to find out, his product wasn't going to do it. So, again, Dan got a hold of the right guy, got him out there on site, looked it over, and said, "This isn't going to do it. We need to do something different." And so, Dan got a hold of Jeff with Cactus Paving. I don't know Jeff's last name. Jeff came out and looked at it, locked it, did some measurements, and shot an estimate back to Dan and thusly to Lisa to get the remaining portion of the runway fixed up and proper, and so it will stay usable for many years to come. And I'd also like to thank my secretary, my treasurer, Mr. Gary Babbel, because he is the man who could meet with these guys every time, whereas I couldn't. So, there's a whole lot of work gone into this, and we appreciate all the hard work from the townspeople, and we hope you approve it. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for being here this evening. Counsel, do you have any questions or comments?
I just have a comment.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to, one, thank you for coming, and all your members for coming that are here, but I wanted to say what a great partnership it sounds like we are having with you, the town, and your organization, and point out that you got the right people involved at the right time. And so, that's a great cue for other people who are getting ready to do a project. If you get in contact with the right people in the town at the right time, we might save everybody, including the town, some money. So, congratulations on that.
All right. Counsel member Anderson?
Yes, I'd like to just also thank the modelers for participating in all of our parades. They always have a float, and that's good. Thank you so much.
You do have some pretty amazing floats. All right, without further ado, we need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Item B is discussion approval/disapproval of staff publishing a notice of intent to increase sanitation rates and fees.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Town Counsel, we were notified that our sanitation cost for residential customers is going to be raised 68 cents per month. So, 12 months of increases equal about $808.16 per customer per year times 6.233, the average number of customers per month, which equals about $50,900. The commercial customers are billed at a cost plus 10%, and they're for apartment complexes and group containers. Those consist of about 71 billings, and we have been informed that the commercial rates will go up 5%. We will need to adjust the billings with this increase. The waste study that we had provided to us had incremental increases. We did not increase in 2021 as was scheduled. The manager decided to forego that increase because of COVID and other issues. So, what we are requesting to council is that we go ahead and advertise for an increase to 1908 per customer, which is a dollar increase, and that'll cover the cost of the increase of 68 cents plus a little bit extra to cover some operational costs. Now, I know that this is going to increase with the number of new customers we have coming on board, so we continue to monitor that. But in order to provide an increase, we have to do a 60-day notification. So, I'm asking council if they would like to proceed with this at this time. We could have possibly held off until we did our utility rate study for water and wastewater, but we were notified after I had come to council already of this increase, and that's to take place on March 1st.
Counsel, do you have any questions or comments regarding Ms. Jimenez's presentation and the information in the packet? Seeing none, we need a motion.
I make a motion. We approve Agenda Item 9B as presented. Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Item C, discussion approval/disapproval to enter into a contract with Cactus Asphalt using the Cooperative Contract through Pinal County JOC Contract 173923 Asphalt Maintenance and Repair Services, which include the application of chip seal binder, polymer modified asphalt rubber, and fog seal binder for pavement preservation treatment in an amount not to exceed $625,579.66. Mr. Chris Salas.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of council. I would like to kind of touch on Item 9A very briefly. Hopefully, Cliff doesn't see a problem with, because it is about Cactus Asphalt. I wanted to point out a few things before moving on to this item. First off, it was Lisa's leadership that got me involved in that project. She wanted to protect the town from expending dollars on a project that would not work. So, that's the very first thing there. But also, tying into what Vice Mayor Cordis said, the town leveraged our relationships in all of these things, our relationships with Guard Top, our relationships with Cactus Asphalt. That price that the Arrow Park Modelers are going to get is based on essentially the work that they're going to already be here in town. It's not independent. It's because their equipment's already going to be here and stuff like that. So, they received a very, very favorable cost on that project because of the towns. And so, I'm, like I said, it's a very small project in a way, but I'm very proud that we were able to assist and leverage all our relationships, our technical expertise, and in some ways, project management, and that Dan kind of ran this project to the end, reporting back, getting the quotes, and everything else like that. So, I'm very proud of that. Onto the actual agenda item. We have a series of chip seal projects identified in all of our maps. And then, this year, we're taking on the parking lot here in Town Hall that has not been maintained in, I don't know how long. That's not necess... That wasn't Public Works' responsibility previously, but we thought, and we spoke to, again, interim town manager Garcia, that it only makes sense for Public Works to start managing the parking lots moving forward, because it's kind of like a road, and it's not really like a park. So, we are also looking at doing a pretty large investment at Heritage Park. I think it's about $76,000 to go ahead and... I think it's about seventy-six thousand dollars to go ahead and fix some of the drainage issues, some of the depressions, and then chip seal, and this pricing includes striping as well. A little off topic, but everybody should be aware of the extreme price changes that we've been seeing so far. It hasn't affected us, thankfully, and this is pretty rare, at least on this contract, Cactus Asphalt is honoring the pricing that's been done with the county. But we are seeing other JOCs that we would normally purchase off cooperatively are not honoring those contracts. And this happened to me in two thousand, I think it was nine or two thousand and ten. I'm living this whole thing over again where, you know, diesel prices went up and people were not willing to honor the price of their contract, and legally, they don't have to. It just says that we have the ability to cooperatively purchase. It doesn't say that they have to sell to us. So we're seeing price increases all over thirty percent, forty percent, fifty percent, and it's not a Town of Florence thing. So we are rushing to get as many projects done. It's an, it's an interesting cycle that we go through. In November, we start talking about CIP. December, it's the next year's budget already, but now that we're in February, I have people, for example, Tom Selay, our facilities manager, is already feeling the pressure of getting all his projects done by June thirtieth. That's how far we're out in front of things. We have to get the stuff done today to be able to complete things by June thirty. And I'd also like to thank the council on approving the leased vehicles. That's a very, that's a very huge win for us to get those things ordered and so we can get them in time, so. If there are any questions on this particular item?
Counsel, any questions? Go ahead.
The last time we did the, the Main Street, and we had some concerns about the workmanship and the, and the cleanup afterwards, are we, we're making sure that we don't have those issues on these projects, correct?
Well, we, we do have now, since that time, we have a, an individual, our field foreman on the maintenance side does, for lack of a better word, babysit all of our projects that are being done for traffic control, for cleanup. There will always be a small amount of delay where the project looks to be done, and then rock is still coming off on a chip seal, and then I think it's about forty-eight hours later, they come back and, and re-broom everything. So they'll be, they definitely are staying on top of it. Public Works has noted these concerns.
Okay, perfect. I just wanted to make sure that when we have a concern, that the next time we go to do a project, that we're able to demonstrate to the community that we did hear them and that we're going to address it and hopefully try to avoid it. I mean, we can't avoid everything, but sometimes things happen, so.
Agreed about, not everything can be avoided, but I think that we need to take ownership of each and every project, and if there's a perceived or real concern, we need to evaluate that and improve on every single time. As you can see, most recently, the quality of our maps have improved dramatically, and previously, I've made the mistake of not reviewing some of the maps, thinking they were done, and then sometimes we somehow miss including maps altogether. So those types of criticism are key to improving the entire organization.
Counselmember Rodriguez?
I just said I want to piggyback on Vice Mayor's comments and also notate that since these are going to be impacting our parks and our public services, I want to make sure that we're tag teaming on with Parks and Rec Community Services and, and making sure that everybody is on the same page of having proper signage, so people know when these parking lots are going to be closed, and also alternative parking lots where they can park, and making sure that they also coincide with the events. Because I think having that public information is probably the biggest piece of all of this, making sure that not only is it clean, but that people know what to expect.
So I know Dan Cisco has already had several emails to Mr. Graves on this matter about posting stuff on this, posting stuff on that, the different mediums. I'm not aware of the detail that he's using yet on special events or how, so yes, absolutely, and I'm sure because Ms. Feliz was part of this project, she will also be working on that. So I think that this is going to be collaborative effort moving forward, Public Works handling the actual contractor issue, but we're going to have to obviously work with Mr. Graves and Ms. Feliz on communication to the public. I absolutely agree.
Thank you.
All right, without further questions or comments, Ms. Garcia?
Mayor, when you make the motion, can you make the motion for the town, the interim Town Manager to enter into the agreement? We don't have it on the agenda, but we also don't have the contract with us tonight ready to sign. That way, we can just sign it when it's ready.
Yes. Whomever makes that motion, please make it that way.
I make a motion that we allow the interim Town Manager to enter into a contract with Cactus Asphalt using the cooperative contract through Penal County JOC Contract Number One Seven Three Nine Two Three for Asphalt Maintenance and Repair Services in an amount not to include six hundred and twenty-five thousand five hundred and seventy-nine dollars and sixty-six cents.
Second. Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item D, discussion approval disapproval of the following board and commission appointments. One, appoint Tabitha McPhee to the Community Services Advisory Board with a term to expire December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three. Two, appoint Hunter McPhee to the Community Services Advisory Board as the youth liaison with a term to expire December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five. Three, appoint Joseph Bracco to the Community Services Advisory Board as an alternate with a term to expire December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five. Four, appoint Gordon Lehman Jr. to the planning and zoning as an alternate with a term to expire December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five. I'd like to say thank you, as always, for being willing to serve in our community on any of the boards and commissions. With that, we need a motion.
Mayor, I'd like to point out real fast that the youth appointment is our first youth that is serving in that position. So kudos to Hunter McPhee, yeah, Hunter McPhee for taking on that position. That's awesome, because we always need the youth's input.
Agreed.
With that, I make a motion to appoint the, the members that were listed to the commissions.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item ten is our second call to the public. If there's anybody online at this time, if you would go ahead and just raise your hand. Mr. Gordon Lehman, go ahead.
I appreciate being appointed and then thank you to the council.
Thank you very much. All right, I do not see any additional hands raised. So with that, we'll go ahead and close call to the public at this time. This is call to the council for current events. Counselmember Mendoza?
I have nothing to add to that.
Counselmember Neal?
Last weekend, I had the opportunity to liaison with Ms. Felix for the, the town tour. First time I've ever done anything like that. I met a lot of people that asked a lot of questions that I need to do a lot more research for, so. But it was, it was, it was really fun. I had a great time. I'm supposed to be getting a T-shirt out of that, so I'm going to go ahead and flex a little muscle. You own a T-shirt, right? T-shirt for town, yes. Also, I'd like to give a shout out to the fire department that helped my mom out last night. Thank y'all very much. She, she was very happy with everything y'all did for her. Thank y'all. And that, saying the new equipment is good, it looks like I'm showing up, because my tan that was blessed by God on the last system, I wasn't showing up too good, and my mama was not happy. She was finna come up here and raise some sand, but I think we're good now. I think, I hope I can be seen. I'm going to ask her when I get home, and if not, I'm going to direct the right to you, Mayor, and tell her it's your fault. Other than that, that's all I got.
Counselmember Hughes?
We went to the car show, and it was fabulous. It was so, we had pictures on Facebook when, when the Bacchus were watching them come down, and it was still night. It reminded me of the Field of Dreams. I mean, it was just, I don't know how many people, I don't know what the final count was, but there had to have been four or five thousand maybe there, and very few people, I mean, I saw people I knew, but a lot of people from out of town. And what I loved about it is, is that then it fell, it, they used all over, all the businesses. They were there, and then on the entire weekend after that, like River Bottom and Wilmary, they had their best days ever. So I loved seeing all of that, so I really, it was a great event. Thank you.
Agreed. Counselmember Rodriguez?
I have nothing to add to that.
Counselmember Anderson?
Well, two things. One, I did attend the third Friday events, Friday night. We had a good showing for that also, and I want to thank the chamber for putting that on. And I also attended the car show Saturday, and that was, as Counselmember Hughes has expanded on, it was just absolutely unbelievable, the amount of people that were there, the cars were impeccable. I don't know how they can make a fifty-five Chevy look so much better than it did in fifty-five, but they did, because we, we had a lot of participation. I did go into a lot of the shops, and they said that their, their sales were quite noticeable increase. All of them were just really pleased with what, what went on. So we did get a lot of kudos from the merchants in town, and I want to thank the, you know, the town for all the work that they did, and the police, the fire department, Parks and Rec, everybody participated, so thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
These microphones, they don't like to turn on. I attended Battle of the Bands, and that was an awesome event, great music. I don't recall who won, but they will be performing at the music festival coming up. So that was a great event, and there were a ton of people there, and same thing, even a lot of people that weren't from our town. I went out of town this weekend, so I missed those events, and I, those are some of my favorite. But John did forget that he had talked to the car promoter part of the event, and he told John that this was the largest car show in the state. And so it's turning out to be a very good event for Florence and is definitely helping to get our name out there to everybody. And all of our events that are, we, we are having are just making such an impact on our town and the, the towns around us, because it's even bringing people through those towns to get to us, so they're getting some exposure that they may not have gotten before. And I think if COVID has done anything on the positive, is that it has made people focus more on events like this, these small-town events and things that are happening in their community, because that's the community that supported them during COVID, so that's the only positive I have for COVID.
All right, so I feel like everything has been said, and again, I just want to cap it off with, there's always something exciting going on in the Town of Florence. I do want to say, if you haven't visited our library lately, go ahead and pay attention to some amazing things that are happening over there. We've talked before about Maker Spaces, and we've been developing that, and I do want to give a lot of recognition to Ms. Gloria for what she has been bringing forward, and maybe we can get her to come and just share with council or put that on the agenda to share without having too much of a spoiler alert. But there is always a great events and things happening in the Town of Florence, and I'm just so happy to be a part of it. With that, we do need a motion. We are going to be going over to the Community Facilities District Number One.
I make a motion, do we need to adjourn first?
Adjourn, yep.
No?
No, because we have executive session.
All right, so let's go ahead and call that to order.
I'll make a motion to open Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number One.
Second.
So our roll call, we have Board Member Mendoza.
Here.
Board Member Neal.
Here.
Board Member Hughes.
Here.
Board Member Rodriguez.
Here.
Board Member Anderson.
Here.
Vice Chair Corda.
Here.
Chair Walter, here. At this time, we need a motion to adjourn to a joint executive session with Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number One and the Mayor and Counsel of the Town of Florence.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries.